Jasmine, you're all ready for the end of the school year? Now, where are you going to school?
I'm going to Kelsey.
Going to be at home, so you'll have to stay at home for a while.
Yes.
Okay, as soon as we get Tamla. Gary Scheffler had their grandchild tonight. We'll have to add them to the Paisley, what did he call her? Paisley Shay Scheffler. Those Brussels sprouts not sitting well. They tasted really good, but they're not happy. Who's doing? I looked at it. Who's doing the invocation tonight? Oh, here, Tricia Hellman. Okay, that must be her. Okay, Tamla, where are you?
And usually, small audience this evening, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. Everybody's all tired out from going to the park. Monrovia days. Angela, can you see if Tamla's out there? Yeah, I didn't know if she was maybe chit-chatting on her way back. Okay. Oh. Well, come on in.
My apologies. I couldn't hear anything out there.
Okay, well, you're not up quite yet, Michelle. But I'll call you up real quick here. Okay, all right. Well, good evening, everyone, to our regular meeting of the 77th Monrovia City Council this Tuesday, May 20, 2025. And I'm calling this meeting to get to order at 7:34 PM. We are going to start off in honor of some new members of the community. Atlas Thomas Barrett, born October 8, 2024, to Fletcher and Jonah Marie Barrett. And then Geneva Aurora Miles de Larios, born May 5, 2025, to Margaret de Larios and Jordan Miles. So we welcome them to the community. And then we'll move on to our invocation. And tonight, we have Tricia Hellman here to provide our invocation. Tricia.
Thank you.
You got some competition there.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for your many blessings bestowed on this dear Monrovia community. We ask that your wisdom, truth, and love be present at this meeting, providing peace, joy, honesty, and affection to the meeting participants. May your loving embrace guide us each to your bountiful light. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will now have our Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Edward Belden.
Please stand, face our flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Edward. Okay, now, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Belden.
Present.
Jimenez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dr. Kelly.
Present.
And Mayor Chevlin.
Yep, here.
And Councilmember Spicer is excused.
And Mr. Spicer is at the neighborhood. It's Nusa, it's neighborhood USA. All right. And he, right, right, right. He is at the conference, and we look forward to his return with bringing many awards back with him. So we did not have a closed session this evening, but we did have an awesome study session on the budget. And I do encourage you all to tune in for later meetings. We will have three go-arounds with the budget. And we thank staff for a great presentation. Then presentations and proclamations. I want to start off. National Public Works Week is actually May 18 to the 24th, 2025. Just want to say, is Alex here? Is he in there? Alex, we just want to say thank you to the Public Works Department for everything that you do, keep our streets and everything else moving and working right. And so, thank you, thank you so very much. I know that Public Works had a very busy weekend as well, so thank you. PR1 is Pasadena Humane Pet of the Month. And we have today Michelle McGrath here with the pet. And so, Michelle, introduce your friend.
Thanks, Becky. So I am subbing this evening for Kevin, who is on vacation in some other country. So with me tonight, I have Diamond. She is an eight-year-old pit bull. Diamond and her owner were actually members of the evacuation of the Eaton Fire. And he had been couch surfing for a couple of months. And unfortunately, that is not working for them. And so, he made the difficult decision to surrender Diamond to us. She's eight years old, and she's really good. She likes other dogs. She loves rolling on the grass. So if anybody has a large patch of grass, Diamond's your girl. And she's very treat motivated. She does know how to sit on command. She can lay down once in a while, but she's still.
She likes parquet floors.
Yeah. You know, so. But other than that, like, she's just a really big love muffin. You know, if I sat on the floor, she'd sit right in my lap.
So what's new at Pasadena Humane or anything, program or vaccination clinics?
On June 1st, we're going to be doing doggy speed dating. And this is the chance where you get to meet a few dogs for about five minutes apiece and decide if they are right for your home to foster for six days. And that's on the heels of our June 7 California Adopt a Pet. So we'll have fee-waived adoptions. Our summer programs for kids are starting in that second week of June. And we've got programs, junior volunteers for 12 to 14, and then our junior vets, where we teach those kids about compassion and fear, anxiety, and stress. Our local wildlife, they get to learn about. So we're really motivating our younger generation to become animal ambassadors and show that care and compassion for animals.
Well, why don't we come down, and we'll take a picture. Okay, now we come to PR2, which is recognition of student government liaison Jasmine Rodriguez. And this is kind of sad, sad but happy. We're happy for you that you'll be going off to college. And I'm sure you're excited for graduation. But we wanted to say thank you for being the school liaison. And we have just a little something here for you. And we do have a certificate presented to Jasmine Rodriguez for a year of outstanding, in-depth reporting and commitment to excellence as student liaison to the city council 2024 to 2025. Thank you for a job very well done, dated this 20th day of May, 2025. So we have that, and we've got a little. I don't like things being wrapped up, of course. So we've got a little bear for you and a pen, so you can do all your, yeah, right. So why don't we come down? Well, first, would you like to say anything?
I do, I have a report.
All right.
So, good evening, Mayor Chevlin, members of the council, and members of the community. To start off, I have a little bit of an update. Our 2025 Great Gatsby theme prom was a huge success. We had an amazing turnout, and the feedback ASB has received has been just spectacular. ASB has made it a priority to start their calendar for the next school year already. And the students for these last two weeks of school are reminding them about how much we appreciate their hard work by giving out free snacks during lunch and after school. Senior Grad Walk will be next Friday, May 30. This event is where students who attended Monrovia District Elementary School is able to walk in their cap and gown throughout their elementary school campuses. Students who did not attend a Monrovia District Elementary School will still have the chance to join the friends and do the walk as well. That same night, our 2025 Senior Grad Night will be hosted by Magic Mountain Amusement Park. Lastly, we'll be hosting Monrovia High School graduation ceremony on June 4, starting at 5 PM. And as a senior myself, I would like to thank Mayor Chevlin, members of the council, and members of the community for this amazing opportunity. And I will forever be grateful for being this school year's student liaison. Thank you.
All right. Come down, and we can. Yeah, thank you. Okay, well, thank you again, Jasmine. You've done an outstanding job. I don't believe there are any changes to our order of business. And so, we will move on to our consent calendar, which are items CC1 through CC21, which are considered routine in business by the city council and can be enacted in one motion. So unless there's a request to pull an item, do we have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. And since there are so many of them, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Belden.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Mayor Chevlin.
Yes, thank you very much. This moves us right into our public comment time. And so, thank you for participating in our meeting this evening. And we invite you to come forward to discuss any items not on the agenda. And there with a three-minute limit. So I do believe we do have some speaker cards, and our clerk will call you up. Beginning with Jennifer McDonald. All right.
So I am, my name's Jennifer McDonald. I live in Monrovia. I've lived in Monrovia and Sierra Madre my entire life. And I've spoken once or twice before at the meetings. I am really, oh, I love living here. I've actually, I love it more and more every day. I went to the historic house tour, and I think it's just a great place to live. That being said, I do have an issue to address with the council, which is trees, trees in our city. I think that we do amazing. We've got oak trees, we've got tree canopy going on a lot of streets in a lot of areas of the city. But I think we could do better. And I think we could, the way to do better is to get up to date. And I have five points to raise of how to do that. And I think all these five things are interconnected of how to make our city better in terms of trees. The first thing is our tree canopy, increasing our tree canopy. The second thing is updating our ordinance. Our tree protection ordinance is 31 years old. Most cities around us, including Arcadia, including Pasadena, including the city of LA, they have all updated their tree ordinances in the last five to 10 years. There's been a lot of new data in the last five to 10 years on tree canopy. And so, a lot of cities are updating their ordinances. And I think that's a really good way for us to help protect our tree canopy. The third thing is having a community forest management plan. And that's a really big discussion that I'm not going to go into. The fourth thing is hiring an independent city forester, somebody in our city to make sure that things are, there's health checks on the trees, and somebody's a liaison between the trees and the city, or even maybe getting people within the city, like, within Public Works, trained on being an arborist, a certified arborist, so that they can help make sure that our trees are healthy. And then the fifth and last thing is having a good contract for tree trimming services. This is the last thing I'll talk about. I do believe that the contract with our current tree trimming service provider, West Coast Arborist expires at the end of June. I have been checking the agendas. I haven't seen anything come up to address whether or not the contract's going to be put out to bid. I think that this would be a great opportunity to maybe get other bids, do a bidding process, have community involvement. And that's another way to sort of get up to date and see where we're at with our tree inventory and explore options, maybe getting community input. So thank you so much for your time this evening, and have a great meeting.
Thank you. Next is Karen Jane.
Honorable City Council members, my name is Karen Jane. I'm a Monrovia resident and volunteer with a local tree committee and with the environmental organization Grow Monrovia. I thank you for this opportunity to address you with a concern about protection of trees in our city. This concern arises because of the low percentage of tree cover in Monrovia. The amount of land in the inhabited areas of the city that is under tree canopy is 18% and is 12% in the area south of Foothill Boulevard. In contrast, 34% of Pasadena is covered by trees. If you agree that tree cover has value in providing shade, coolness, water conservation, fire resistance, air purification, habitat, and beauty, and that we should aim to increase the tree cover in our town, then I hope you'll also agree that we should update the municipal code that protects our trees. As Jennifer said, our tree protection ordinance was adopted in 1994. And those of neighboring cities were adopted between 2016 and 2020. So it has become deficient in many respects. It protects only oaks, no other species of trees. In neighboring cities and in LA County areas, multiple native species are protected. And in Pasadena, all mature trees are protected. That's one concern. In residential areas, the ordinance protects only those oaks that are located along streets. The ordinance is for other cities and for the county cover public and private properties alike. This is appropriate as the presence of shade trees in yards affects the whole neighborhood. Finally, the other cities have an arborist on staff who makes knowledgeable decisions about requests for tree trimming, tree removal, tree protection during construction projects, and tree planting. In Monrovia, there are seven interested parties who make these decisions. The Community Services Committee, the Development Review Committee, Public Works, the City Council, the Planning Department, residents, and West Coast Arborists. This leads to uneven enforcement of the ordinance. For these reasons, the trees of Monrovia are inadequately protected. We would like to propose that our tree protection ordinance be updated to protect all mature trees on public and private properties, and that a city forester be hired or trained to enforce it. Given that our neighboring cities have already made these changes to their ordinances, we could use their examples to adopt our new ordinance, fitting it to our needs. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ian Matkin.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. So as you know, it's an ongoing set of issues. Let me mention one thing very important, and the reason I want to speak with Dr. Kelly soon is that when you are planning to establish affordable housing, you need to think about the waiting list and what kind of procedures there are for getting on the waiting list, progressing up the waiting list. And I have a lot of suggestions based on my experience of many years of applying to affordable housing. The first thing is that you don't want people on for years and years and years. And the way to avoid that is that you have a sort of time, that you have to request that people update their applications on the waiting list every year. If they don't, then they're off. That's one suggestion. There are other options as for how to continue to update the waiting list. But what you don't want is waiting lists that go on for years and years. Because then that simply has a lot of people on it, many of whom probably are no longer interested, have already rented elsewhere. This is what I'm saying. I have experienced myself when I applied to this Long Beach Senior Art Colony. Because they have a very excellent system in which, within six months of being on the waiting list, I was already offered an apartment. Of course, I had already moved here. And fortunately for me, I feel this is a much safer, nicer place to live. So I'm trying to help establish places like Long Beach Art Colony here in Monrovia. That's my goal. So that's number one on the agenda. Number two is to update you that we are still in distress. And I think it is very critical, while you are building new affordable housing, to ensure that people living in existing affordable housing are safe and are not suffering the way we are in 105 East Olive Avenue, a few blocks from here, where I myself have not had kitchen lights, a heater in the bathroom, have not had lights replaced in my bathroom. So it's like I'm sitting in practically a dark kitchen, a dark apartment, not to mention, there are literally no lights in the front or back, which means I feel very unsafe when even going back to the building after about, I think, nine o'clock, and then it's.
Betsy.
Okay, so.
That's okay.
Anyway, you're taking my time, please. Anyway, so the point is that these conditions make the place completely unsafe. There have been all kinds of illegal activity that I myself have had to report of people, former residents, or at the time, existing residents, drug dealers, drug addicts, and others that have endangered the lives of everyone in the building. And again, while you're considering the circumstances in which we create new affordable housing, we cannot ignore the fact that there are existing residents that are literally unsafe every day that need to also be addressed. Do I have any more time left?
10 minutes, 10 seconds.
10 seconds!
10 seconds.
Okay, I want to mention something, because I'm a teacher, and there's a wonderful video that was at one point part of an Oprah Winfrey episode called Waiting for Superman. I am happy to share information about this because a friend of, is that the bell? I'll just say quickly, a wonderful teacher friend of mine, Isaac Pollak, was actually given a multimillion-dollar award at this charter school. He was teaching it through that program of Waiting for Superman. Again, happy to report, next session.
Thank you.
More about Waiting for Superman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wanting to address the city council on items not on our agenda? Oh, Chris, come on down.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Chevlin, city council, city staff. My name is Chris Lowes. I'm here today as a proud alumni and someone that is super proud every time I go to Monrovia Days. Going there this year, like, everyone here who's a part of it, like, wow, like, every year it gets better and better, and the energy that was there this year was just amazing. So thank you to everybody who does that. I think it just reflects great outwardly for our city who doesn't see, they kind of know about Friday Street Fair, like, but this was like that in its ultimate form and fashion with the lights and the street fair happening and everything happening at the top. Well done. Also, too, I wanted to say, I think it's super cool that y'all give to the nonprofit organizations. That's like one of the most incredible things I've seen in different cities and how they support local nonprofits. And for anyone who's watching this that doesn't know that they support local nonprofits that are small nonprofits, youth-oriented, community-driven, that are doing things in the community, and they pay them hourly to run the game booths. So you get to talk to people and work, I think it's amazing. So thank you for that. And lastly, before I leave, I would love the opportunity to audition for a parade announcer. Like, I've done it in Hollywood and other places, and that's cool. But like, in my hometown, it would mean the world. So if I can apply for that process, I would love to be a part of that, so.
Okay, I see Tina is at the back of the room there.
Solid.
Yep, yep. Thank you, Chris. Okay, anyone else wanting to address the city council on items not on our agenda this evening? Okay, now, seeing any, then we will close that portion, our public input portion, and we will move on. We don't have any public hearings this evening. And we'll move on to reports of city manager and staff. We'll start off with Mr. Veek.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple items, if it'd be okay with the city council, as the public knows, council is not allowed to respond to public comments that are made as part of the public comment period where it's items not on the agenda. But I think. But I think I want to address a couple things related to the tree comments that were made earlier. Just a few things that I think will be helpful for anyone listening in the public. The city has two primary ordinances which are related to trees. We have our Oak Tree Preservation Ordinance, but then we also have Chapter 12.44, which is street trees. This is the ordinance that governs how we plant trees throughout the city and public areas. This was adopted in 2020. And so, what it did was it really eliminated a lot of non-native species. It updated our standards for how far apart we plant them. And I think since that time, the city's been very just aware of trying to plant trees. We also, since that update, we were in a historic drought, so there's a time period where we weren't planting additional trees. But I think those two ordinances do go hand in hand, and I wanted to clarify that this one had, was updated recently. According to our recent Housing Element Certification Process, we also updated our Environmental Justice Element. As part of that robust 18-month planning process, one of the things we looked at specifically was our tree canopy. The city of Monrovia has approximately 53% of the city covered with a tree canopy. That includes the Wilderness Preserve, that includes the entire geographic area of the city which is measured. When you eliminate portions of Monrovia that have a lot of trees, I mean, the geographic area of Monrovia is more than 60%, is almost 60% green space, open spaces. So, we preserve a lot of Monrovia as open space. I think when you exempt that from your calculation, and now we're starting to look at more developed areas, and that's where you might get into the 18 or 30%, but I think it's really important to, for context, that the city doesn't have an 18% tree canopy. Citywide, we have almost a 53% coverage of tree canopy, which is pretty extensive. Also related to trees, the City Council will be reviewing the annual tree planting program probably in the next several months. We won't plant in the summertime, but more in the fall or in the springtime, which is when it's best to plant. The city has been planting approximately 270 trees each year as part of our annual tree planting. I think that'll be a fun project to bring forward. A couple additional items specifically related to the directives update, and then one additional item I want to make council aware of. Related to directives update, the city did share proclamations for Mental Health Awareness Month, Asian American Pacific Islander Month, as well as Older Americans Month through the city public library, the community center, as well as the city manager update. We also provided that letter of support to Mosquito and Vector Control District in support of their federal funding request, and we'll continue to work with them and support. I'd like to invite the City Council to mark your calendars. We'll make sure your event calendar is updated. We're kind of planning a special, unique year-end opportunity for our kindergarteners in Monrovia. You know, we have an amazing third grade program. We have a lot of activities for all the older kids, but we really wanted to try something new. Think of it kind of like a Kinder Play Date with the city. So, on Thursday, May 29th, we're going to be hosting a small gathering of about 300 kids at Library Park. We're going to ask, you know, the council, we're going to invite the council to come. Staff is going to be well underway, kids from all of the schools. I think the exception of Mayflower, which has some testing that day, are going to come down and participate. We want to show off some fun trucks and vehicles and equipment. We want to bring them into the library, want to play on the playground. That's going to be from 9:00 to about 10:30. We still have a lot of details to plan, but I just wanted to make sure council, you know, bring your sneakers, bring your gym shorts, plan to have a little bit of fun with the kids, and we'll look forward to hosting about 300 kindergarteners as well as their parents and chaperones, teachers on that date. That's my update this evening.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Feek? And I'm sure also we'll share it in more detail at a future meeting, our award for the tree, the arbor one, Arbor Day.
Correct. Mayor, at the beginning of the meeting, you had shared it with me. I haven't had a chance to review it, but we were recently, we recently received a renewal of our Tree City USA certification.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on then to reports of City Council members and subcommittees. Mr. Spicer, again, is excused not to hear this evening, so he won't have a report. Move on to Mr. Beldon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wanted to say thank you to city staff and I think the community as well. On Wednesday, May 7th, there was a kind of celebration, walked a bike to school, a few folks, a good number of folks came out, so it was great to see. And just, I think, maybe Alex or Dylan could correct me, but they're still collecting survey information on the public, I'm going to murder the name.
Comprehensive Safety Action Plan.
That addresses pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, and probably car safety since, you know, usually those all, sometimes they run into each other, which is unfortunate. And of course, I think Madam Mayor will talk a little bit more about Monrovia Reads, and a great, great opportunity to celebrate that the Gala at So All May Read. Had a lot of fun at that event. It's always great. I heard that they had a record-breaking night, so I'm sure you'll bring that up later. Thanks to our amazing fire department and just sharing their house, their main house with all of us for the pancake breakfast and entertaining everyone, but also showing them all the amazing work you do. It's always special to be out there and have a little breakfast at the same time, so thank you all for that. And I will just say, I mean, I think everyone's going to say, Monrovia Read was amazing, wonderful event, and I do want to just say thank you to everybody that's here. I know you put a lot of hours and all your staff put a lot of hours, and it's just remarkable to see so many people out there working and still having a smile on their face on Sunday at 9:00 PM when they're closing down and doing such great work to do that. So, I think everyone knows it was outstanding, but it's just great to see such a thing that is celebrating Monrovia, but really importantly, it's just celebrating our community, and it's a way for us all to gather together, and it's outstanding. So, thank you so much for that. I will close with that. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Jimenez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to start off by saying thank you so much to Monrovia Fire and Rescue for their wonderful open house that they had. It's not just an open house. For those of you that haven't been, it's an experience. They have live music, live demonstrations, delicious pancakes, most importantly, the friends and neighbors, the sense of community, people that come out to support our firefighters, and you can see just how much Monrovia loves its first responders. We're blessed here that we have our fire chief in the audience. He can testify to just how successful the event was and just how many people were there. And as well, at the Monrovia Historical Museum, very special event, it was showcasing two new displays. But I want to say this, I think the most outstanding thing besides the huge crowds was how can our museum do so much with such little money? And I think it's the volunteers. Volunteers make Monrovia go. The craftsmanship that was put into the architectural history of Monrovia displays, specifically the facade of the Craftsman home, was incredible. The fire department, I don't know where they got the, these vintage photos that, very, very old, that really told the story of the Monrovia Fire Department. The artifacts that are there, we're really blessed that people see the value, the history, and they save them, and they were on display there. Again, the crowds were huge. Congratulations to our museum, and thank you to the many volunteers that made it such a successful event. As well, I attended So All May Read event, and it was incredible. The event honored John Wilson. He was, he won the recognition of the Literally Legacy Award. There was great food, live auction, you really saw the community that came out and supported literacy here in Monrovia. And of course, last but not least, Madam Mayor, was our Monrovia Days Parade. I want to specifically thank the Community Services Department. I remember one morning when they were just bringing the equipment for the carnival. It was like before 7:00 AM, and I saw Tina Cherry there with her coffee, waiting for them to bring the equipment. She was there from beginning early in the morning till late, and the same for Rebecca. And I don't know, I guess they didn't sleep or rest, because every detail of the parade, you could tell was planned out and well executed. So, I want to thank you. I want to thank everybody that attended and made it such a special day. I thought the Western theme was appropriate. It wasn't just the council members who were wearing cowboy hats. You could see it in the Monrovia High School bands, the marchers, they had the same theme. It was a wonderful 139th Birthday Monrovia. Happy Birthday, Monrovia. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Kelly.
Thank you. I also want to talk about the parade, and not only did Tina and Rebecca do such a phenomenal job, the rest of the staff, city staff that were driving, it took, it took everyone. It took all of the departments participating, and not only the departments, but other volunteers within our city. But what I appreciated the most, particularly with the parade, was to see the variety of people participating. I just, everybody was included within our city, everyone. I just, when you're in the parade, you just look to the right and to the left. Not only were they included, they got cars, they got trains, planes, or whatever it took to get them down. But I want to give a special shout out to my driver, Alex Tchiki. I definitely want to do that. He had the music playing. He, I got extra candy. I forgot candy. He went and got candy, took it from his department, whoever he got it from, we don't know, but we appreciated it. And I'm getting used to understanding how to pace myself. I was done with my candy within a half of a block, so I have to understand how to do it, and we...
Moderation.
Right. And I do know Janet's not giving enough candy out, because she had a whole bag at the end. So, we need to find balance in this. Your city treasurer, yes, she was holding on to that candy. So, we'll figure it out. But thank you, Alex, for paying attention and bringing all those details. And Chief Jeremy Sanchez, I want to just give a shout out to him again because of, he had set up an emergency center and took the time to make sure that we were going to be covered in the event that there would be an emergency. So, that was amazing. And also, the museum and seeing all of the displays, and to your point, Council Member Sergio, with little money, the museum is amazing, and a lot of people didn't know about it. I posted, I did a story on my story, and believe it or not, I had so many people making comments saying, "Where is that museum?" I was very surprised about that. But a lot of people do not know, and so we just want to invite you down to the museum. It's one of the best-kept secrets, and it's an amazing museum. Veterans Thank You Dinner. It was packed. We had veterans coming from all over, right here in our town. We ought to be proud of what's going on at the Monrovia Library. Veterans come from all over, and they, and I got a chance to talk to them, and they were saying that they come to our Veterans Center because it is the best, is very knowledgeable, we have lots of services, and they're just really excited about what we have going on here in the city of Monrovia for veterans. And so, again, we want to acknowledge our library team and Mabel and all of her team for the hard work that they do in bringing that together. And last but not least, speaking of the library, the summer reading program, mark your calendar for the summer reading program kickoff. My children all took part of this, it's very exciting. Saturday, June 7th, from 12:00 to 4:00 at Library Park, we will have crafts, games, and even a magic show. Sign up to read this summer and be rewarded with free books. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. There's so much going on all, all the time. And you know, Tina, I didn't, I didn't ask you ahead of time, but I am going to call you up here to do a little promo for our concerts in the park. Larry's not here, he would have done it, but so that I get all the facts and figures correct, if you could come up and do a little promo for this Saturday, no, Sunday, excuse me, May 25th.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, we're really excited to be launching our summer concert series this Sunday. At Station Square is where we're going to start. We'll have six consecutive Sundays where we'll run our concert program out there. You can get the lineup on the city website, but our first day, it's going to be Bump Town. They also played at Monrovia Days, so you may be familiar with them. But one of the things we're really excited about, and want to make sure the community is aware of, is that this year we're adding an enhancement to the concerts at Station Square. So, every Sunday at Station Square, beginning this Sunday through the end of June, we'll have a family festival in the promenade at the park from 4:00 to 9:00. There's going to be a variety of food for you to choose from, as well as activities for the entire family. And we're fortunate to partner with our friends at Hop Secret, and we will have a beer garden as a part of the concerts. So, really want to encourage people, in one of the directions council's given, is to activate the park down there and find different ways that we could bring the community together and populate the park, and so this is one of those enhancements.
Thank you very much. So, please come out and join us in Station Square, starting at 4:00, and then the concerts start at, is it 7:00? 7:00. All right, great. Thank you, thank you very much. And yes, there's so many, and I joined my colleagues, whether it was at Monrovia Reads, and Janet Wall is out in the audience. She's the treasurer for our Monrovia Reads. We did have a phenomenal event and phenomenal outcome, and so all, all the more to help our community in making sure that our kids read and read well, and lots of books and programs that we can promote. So, and thank you for everyone who came out for that. It's always a special event. And yes, and pancakes and ribbon cuttings. Monrovia Chamber just yesterday had a ribbon cutting for Creative Bean, and they also are involved with the June Music Fest, which is scheduled for June 8th from 12:00 to 7:00 PM in Library Park. You'll be hearing more about that. And yes, those museum exhibits, I, I love, I don't know how many of you on road trips, if you have the opportunity to just happen to go into some, you know, podunk little town or whatever, and you go into their museum. I mean, and most of them are just like large closets with somebody's discards. I, I just can't say enough great things about our, our museum, and we do so much with, with not that much other than just the support of all their volunteers and whatnot. We just want to thank, thank them for such an awesome museum. You really need to go out and, and check it out. And yes, the, the fire department, it asked us, and I think you went as well, Edward, we toured the EOC, our Emergency Center, and so very, very interesting and all the information. In fact, I think sometime soon, maybe we can have Jeremy come and give the public maybe a little taste of what we do at the, the EOC, so they know. And we have our own notification system now, which is, was, which will be absolutely awesome. We don't have to depend on, stop me if I'm saying anything wrong there, Jeremy, that I won't have to, we won't have to depend on the county and those bad notifications. So, at any rate, but that would be great, so people, and we could promote that maybe through your updates as well. I also had the opportunity on May 12th to go to the high school to see a presentation of the femineres, which are the fourth and fifth graders from all the grammar schools. And it was really, really a great event to show these young ladies that are getting involved in engineering and things, it's being introduced to them, and so very, very exciting. They don't discriminate though, there were a few guys, but for the most part, and they, they got them wearing pink t-shirts, and I mean like, pink like this. And so, they had a great time, lots of young ladies out there, and they had their projects out, and they were displayed and showed everyone how they, how they worked. So, that was really great. And then I did also want to talk about that, the one thing that I did do, I was representing the, the city, city managers and the mayors. Unfortunately, Dylan couldn't attend that day, but she had a really great turnout. This is Sasha Rene Perez, our California, excuse me, Senator for our district, and she went over quite a few pieces of her introduced legislation and gave an ample amount of time for people to essentially complain, not always in something that she has control of. It is interesting, and I've talked a lot about Measure A, how many people do not understand... many people do not understand Measure A that was passed in November, the half cent sales tax, and exactly who controls that, who does it? It's not Sasha Perez as our state senator. So at any rate, it was very interesting. And I hope to get her to come out to Monrovia to see all the things that we do here. There wasn't really any time for one-on-one. It was really a packed house. And she was really trying to introduce herself to everyone in her district and give them an opportunity to voice concerns. But like I said, there were a lot of concerns that really should have been more directed to Los Angeles County. So at any rate, with that, I think that covers it just about all of it. So with that, then we will move on to our administrative reports, AR 1 and AR 2. And AR 1, award of contract to All American Asphalt for Peck Road and Mountain Avenue Infrastructure Improvement Project. Mr. Jimenez is going to recuse himself on this item as he has property that is directly affected by this contract. So
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You may go sit in the other room. And we'll invite you back. All right. Alex?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Chevlin and Council. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak on this order of contract to All American Asphalt for the Peck Road and Mountain Avenue Infrastructure Improvement Project. So for discussion tonight, we'll review Peck Road and Mountain Avenue resurfacing projects. Previously, we've talked to council about Peck Road and Mountain Avenue individually. And so tonight, you'll see that the project has now been combined. So we'll talk about the combined scope of work. We'll also talk about the traffic signal at Mountain and Lemon. That's also been an item that individually we've spoken to council about and has been a topic of discussion. And then finally, we'll look for council's direction, and then we'll take action on that at the end of this presentation. So the project scope, we are proposing to improve approximately 1.3 miles of Peck Road, where resurfacing from curb to curb. And we are including Bob Street, which is directly off of Peck Road, improving about 0.8 miles of Mountain Avenue of roadway curb to curb, and then replacing the traffic signal at the intersection of Mountain and Lemon. This also includes pedestrian safety improvements, including traffic calming bulbouts. So the funding plan, so again, as we've talked to council individually about these streets and these projects, we wanted to give council the whole look at how we're funding this project. So Peck and Myrtle was then allocated Measure K funding, so about $2.7 million, which is a sizable amount. Mountain Avenue was separately appropriated $2.5 million, which brings the total Measure K allocation for the project to about $5.2 million. The other piece of funding associated with this is SB 1 RMR funding, which is one of the local return funding sources that we receive on an annual basis. And there's about $638,000 associated with that. So a total project funding plan of about $5.9 million. And we'll get into where the bids are. And we have some good news for the council for consideration tonight. So reviewing Scope 1, which is Peck Road and Myrtle Avenue, what we're trying to show you here and show the public is that the proposed scope would be improvement along Peck Road and Myrtle Avenue. So you'll see on the picture on the left-hand side, it's going to be Peck Road all the way from Jordy Road next to the school, all the way down to the Southern Terminus, which is going to be the cul-de-sac right next to the LA County Sanitation District Building. On the right-hand side, what you're seeing is the small portion of Myrtle Avenue. That's going to be as Peck and Myrtle then merge together to the Southern Terminus of the city. So all in, we would be improving quite a bit of roadway in the southern portion of the city, which is going to be an exciting and well-needed improvements in this area. And then for item 2, Mountain Avenue. So this is going to be Mountain Avenue from Foothill Boulevard all the way down to Huntington Drive. And you'll see that we have Lemon Avenue and Royal Oaks called out in that. So two pretty large intersections along Mountain, but it's the main stretch of Mountain. And that would be right adjacent to Recreation Park and the Public Works Corporate Yard. And then item number 3 is going to be the Mountain and Lemon traffic signal. And so what we're just noting here on this graphic here is going to be with the blue star where that proposed traffic signal would be. I would note there is an existing signal there. So what we're proposing is going to be an upgrade to what's existing. Just to kind of reset everyone's state of mind for how we're going to discuss Mountain and Lemon, what I want to show here is this is the existing condition of Mountain Avenue. Some of the feedback that we received over the years is that the alignment of Mountain Avenue creates a condition where the left-hand turn, as you're going northbound on Mountain and turning left onto Lemon, which is going to be your westbound movement, is going to be one of the harder turns to make. And that's because the alignment of it doesn't allow the best vision or the best line of sight for that traffic. And so you'll see that the southbound traffic down Mountain Avenue, it can cause conflict. And so that's a lot of the feedback that we've gotten over the years. Incrementally, we've made changes to this intersection, including no right turns on red. We've restriped this area. And so I think at this point, we've done everything that we can, barring physical improvements to the intersection to make it as safe as possible. And so that's why the item is before you tonight. And so what we're proposing as part of the signal improvement is that there'd be a realignment for this entire intersection. And so what you're seeing here, I'll start on the left-hand side, you're going to see some striping improvements, and I'll try to use this laser pointer here. There's striping improvements on Lemon Avenue on the westerly side. So you'll see a painted bulb out here, or a painted median, I should say, that would then force traffic a little more south, which would actually cause what we're hoping to slow down traffic as they approach the intersection. You'll see now a formal two-lane movement here on this side of the intersection with a dedicated left to go northbound. And then you'll see a through and a right-hand turn here. You're also seeing as we go a little south, right here, this is going to be a new bulbout at the southwest corner of this intersection. That would actually cause a slowing down of traffic coming southbound on Mountain, which we're hoping to make a more safe turning movement as you get onto Mountain, and then slow down traffic as you're going east and west on Lemon. The alignment that I was referring to earlier, so if you start on the southern leg of Mountain, what you're seeing here is that this left-hand turn movement here is actually shifting over approximately half a lane width. What we're trying to accomplish here is that as you shift this over, as a driver, you will have better line of sight to seeing the southbound traffic here. And so that lane alignment would accomplish that. And so we are seeing improved safety improvements here by accomplishing this improvement here. The traffic signal equipment that's being proposed here are the upgrade. The poles and the equipment are all from, as far as we can tell, from the early 90s. So that would be approximately three decades old. So it is about time that we start to look at those traffic signals to see if they're due for an upgrade. Certainly, we can take a look at, you know, age of all of our signals, and we can always improve. There's always improving technology. But that is another item for consideration tonight. And so just for some scoping options, so in the staff report, we said as option 1, we can proceed with the project as presented, which includes roadway improvements on Peck, Mountain, and then that includes the traffic signal at Mountain and Lemon. Option 2, which is an item just for discussion tonight, and council can give us direction, would be to proceed with road repairs for Peck and Mountain. But we can remove the signal at Mountain and Lemon, and we can talk about what the cost implications are of that. And then the third option is just provide further direction to staff. And I'm happy to answer any questions as you're talking about different scenarios that you're thinking through. So to give you some financial backing to what those options look like, so proceeding with the project as presented, so resurfacing about 2.1 miles of roadway along Mountain and Peck, replacing and upgrading the traffic signal and pedestrian improvements at Mountain and Lemon. We're happy to report that we received bids for this project, and it was an extremely competitive bid. So if we wanted to include everything that we just proposed, it would be about $5.3 million, which is about $600,000 less than what we allocated as part of this funding plan. So that $600,000 can go towards other projects or programs, should council direct us to do that. Option 2, which would be the removal of Mountain and Lemon at the signal. So again, this is the graphic of what we're proposing here. Simply what we could do is eliminate the upgrade of the traffic signal equipment, but we can keep the roadway alignment improvements and the bulbouts. If we just remove the traffic signal equipment itself, it would represent about a $632,000 savings, which would then mean, I'm sorry, I have that in the summary slide, but we'll get into that later, is it'll represent approximately $1.2 million under what the funding plan would be. So that would be about $1.2 million for council to allocate for other projects or other programs. And then option 3 is you can provide an alternative option or provide staff direction, and then we can obviously prepare scope and budget for that. So as a summary, and now we're seeking your direction, or we can answer any questions. Option 1 is we can proceed as presented, which I mentioned. That's about a $5.3 million project, which is under the budget allocation of $5.9 million. Option 2 is we can proceed without the traffic signal. The project would then be about just shy of $4.7 million, which represents about a $1.2 million savings that can be allocated to something else. Or option 3 is council can provide us direction, and we can look at other scenarios. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Alex?
I just want to clarify, Alex, that when you said that budget allocation, that this is the money that we already have set aside for this project with option 1. Is that already within the budget?
Yes, that is correct.
Not necessarily a question. Thank you for providing the additional, I guess, the illustration there of what the improvements are. I think they look really great. But I do think that from my perspective, seems what the outcomes look like for the next couple of years for capital improvements, if we can save, you know, close to $600,000, I mean, more than half a million dollars on something that may or may not provide a lot of asset improvement, or even safety improvement, because you already have the other roadway reconstruction and reconfiguration, it makes sense to me.
Is that option 2?
Yes, I think so.
And I just wanted to reconcile it with in the agenda item, the options for consideration. And it's got that number one is different than what we have up there. And I was trying to reconcile the option 1 in the agenda report.
I apologize, Mayor, for that oversight. So option 1 in the report and what you're seeing on the presentation, so that would be the all-in cost for the project, including the traffic signal. That also, in the report, is approving a contingency. And that also approves a task order for construction management. So that's what you're seeing is the $5.3 million.
Okay. So the option 2, we do everything except we wouldn't be installing the signal, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
The only, the struggle that I'm having, I love the one-two savings, but I'm also kind of wrestling with the idea, will the traffic light, how much of a difference is that going to make? Because I'm thinking safety, I'm thinking, how can we prevent accidents? And that's what's in the back of my mind. But if the signal is not going to make that big of a difference, or there's no guarantee, then I would be leaning more toward option 2. But if there was, but if there is a, I mean, I guess I would need to lean on your expertise. If that light or the changing of the light is something that is really detrimental as it relates to making a big difference in people being able to see and navigate that space, that I'm not, you know, money's great, but saving lives
But yeah, let me ask you, how many accidents have we had at that corner because of that?
Off the top of my head, I know we've had several collisions there over the last 10 years. I was going to say to Dr. Kelly's point, there's maybe a couple of items I would say for consideration is that I think if council were to recall, this really came up because there was one resident who lived on Lemon Avenue who is bringing this to the attention of the community. And that resident has since moved away. To my knowledge, I know we haven't received anything recently, and we haven't had a recent collision. The second thing that we can consider is that we can always go back and do the traffic signal if we feel like the physical improvements, the bulbout, the restriping, the alignment, if we feel like that's not adequate or we're still seeing issues, we can always go back and do the signal as well. So there are certain things that we're already planning to do in the project itself that are planning for future, such as installing conduit to pull new wire. So we're already thinking ahead. And so if council keeps that in mind as well, certainly we can plan for that.
And I turned left there. Edward?
No, I think
Oh. Would you like to say something?
I apologize. But one additional thing that we didn't really talk about here in this presentation is if we even take a step back from the project, Mountain Avenue historically is a very old street with a lot of old utilities underneath. And one of the scopes of work we looked at was replacing the 100-year-old water main underneath it, replacing the sewer main that's underneath it, and all of the public utilities that exist either along the roadway or underneath the roadway. And there's an extensive amount of work that we expect is going to happen over the next probably 10 to 20 years. So option 2 also allows us to not spend money on a signal, which could be done at any point in time. We all felt internally as staff that we're actually doing improvements to pedestrian safety at that intersection. That's why the bumpouts. That's why the improved striping. That's why all of those improvements to make it more pedestrian-friendly and more pedestrian-focused. We did not feel that there was a safety component with going signal or not signal. But I do think that by not investing in a signal right now, it also, in addition to saving or avoiding spending money, but it also gives us time to wait and see what happens over the next 10 to 15 years with that roadway. We do expect Edison is going to continue work. The gas company will continue work. At some point, we're going to have to redesign our own water system, which alone is probably a $10 million project, because it's just such an old system. It's working fine now, but at some point, it'll need to be replaced. So this project, this resurfacing project, we look at it like a 10-year project. The road is going to be good for 10 years. And that also buys us time to figure out between now and then, what do we do for the other undergrounding work that needs to happen?
I was just going to comment. I turned left there on Lemon from going north on Mountain. And I've never had an issue. That's why I'm just
Because you're an expert driver.
Yes.
And we should be clear, I think it was obvious, but there is a signal light, which you mentioned already. There's our signal light there. It's just in that extra arrow, like a left turn arrow that would be essentially improved, right?
That's correct. So the upgrade would have a dedicated left-hand turn signal. So it'd have additional phasing.
I'd say option 2.
For me. All right. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion for option 2, as illustrated on our screen there.
Let's second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. There are only three of us today, but roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Beldon.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Dr. Kelly, and Mayor Chevlin.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Alex. Then we are moving then to item, oh, thank you, you're getting Hello. All right then. We can move on then to AR 2, Fiscal Year 2425 Budget Update, Resolution Number 2025-23. And Buffy Bullis, our Administrative Services Director, is here to present.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor Chevlin and members of the City Council. Thank you for your time this evening. It's my pleasure to present a 2425 quarterly It's my pleasure to present a twenty-four, twenty-five quarterly budget update for you this evening. Um, the screen should be coming up soon. I, there should be a handout at your desk um with the presentation, so I think we can go ahead and move forward with it. Okay, so the purpose of the uh update tonight is to provide you with the budget update and high-level overview of the city's finances as we close out twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, we'll also review budget adjustments for your consideration. So there's two attachments to the resolution. Attachment A includes operating budget adjustments and attachment B includes CIP budget adjustments. And these adjustments help us better align the budget with our latest estimates. And I did want to note that this will be the last budget update for the fiscal year. And lastly, uh, we'll provide a brief CIP update for twenty-four, twenty-five funded projects. Um, overall, the reason that we do these updates is to be proactive at managing the budget. Uh, we want to be able to adjust and get out ahead of things. As we monitor the budget throughout the year, this gives us an opportunity to discuss with you and adjust. So this slide here includes a quick economic overview. Um, there still continues to be some uncertainty in the state of the economy. So as we've seen, there are considerable changes happening at the federal level, level, including potential tariffs, federal funding freezes, federal employee lay, layoffs among others. And as we know, these events can have financial impacts or ripple effects such as impacts to household spending, employment, interest rates, as well as other areas. And this has caused a certain level of uncertainty in the economy. And while we're still closely monitoring tariffs, we do expect some impacts to budget items for items uh sourced with parts from countries like Mexico, China, or Canada. Um, we are also seeing some construction-related impacts from, from regional wildfire damage. Um, but as we close out the year, most city revenues are stable and showing modest growth, which is good news. Um, however, statewide, we're continuing to see a slowdown in consumer spending, especially with auto sales, which impacts our sales tax revenues. On a positive note, in light of these economic events, council has spent years building a strong financial foundation and this puts us in a good position to adjust to a changing economic environment. And we know that we can easily pivot if needed, as we've done in the past. Um, however, there's still cause to pause, tighten our belts and proceed with caution. Um, staff will continue to monitor things closely for changes in the economic environment in the upcoming year. Overall, a conservative budget was developed in September and updated just recently in March. Expenditure budgets are fully loaded and include the full cost of salaries, benefits and operational costs, and revenue projections are conservative. Um, the quarterly budget update process has been an effective way for council to proactively guide the city's fiscal position throughout the year, especially when we have changing economic conditions.
And thank you for doing that.
Oh, yes, you're welcome, my pleasure. Um, and this slide here shows total adjustments to revenues and expenditures by operating budget, uh, CIP budget, and then transfers in and out. Detailed line items with descriptions can be found in attachment A for the operating budget and then B, uh, attachment B for the CIP budget in your agenda packet. But in total, we are proposing to adjust revenues up by two point seven million and expenditures down by three point zero six million. And we'll go through these uh numbers in more detail in the next slides. And this slide here includes a high-level uh view of our citywide budget and it includes our CIP projects. We've included the current budget and revised budget by fund type on this slide. Um, I did want to note that the revised budget includes Q three quarterly adjustments that we're proposing this evening. You will note that there is an excess of expenditures over revenues for a few of the fund types. Um, this difference is due to the planned use of reserves that have been set aside in a prior year. Um, overall, citywide revenues of a hundred and fifty-four point seven five million exceed citywide expenditures of a hundred and fifty point six nine million by a little over four million. Um, so first, let's take a look at general fund revenues. I have a few comments on this slide. Um, most general fund revenues have been stable and are showing slight growth. Uh, we are proposing a net positive adjustment of a little over three hundred and eighty-two thousand in gen, in the general fund. Um, this does exclude transfers in, which I'll discuss in a few slides. Um, property tax continues to be our most reliable and dependable revenue in the general fund and no adjustment is being proposed at this time. Um, but as I mentioned earlier, uh, we are seeing a slowdown in sales tax receipts, uh, which is largely due to decline in vehicle, new vehicle sales. Um, the decline is due to the current cost of vehicles and financing and now uh potential tariffs have, are having an impact in the sales tax category. Um, we work closely with HDL, who is our sales tax consultant, to update our estimates and uh we are proposing a negative adjustment of a little over two hundred and twenty-four thousand as part of this Q three proposal. Um, but we do have some good news. Um, our TOT, also known as our hotel tax, uh, revenue is doing really well. Um, our third quarter collections uh have outperformed our projections, so we are proposing a positive adjustment of a little over six hundred and nineteen thousand. Um, and this is mainly due to higher-than-expected occupancy levels at our hotels, some of which are due to the recent buyers. Um, and we also now have a full year of Marriott Town Play Suite actuals to look at and use as part of our projections. So now we have that historical information to use. Um, the last bullet on this slide includes a few notes about our general fund other revenues. Um, we are proposing a net decrease of a little over eleven thousand for adjustments related to items such as the continued closure of Canyon Park and for changes in program activity levels, among others. Um, the proposed adjustment uh includes a positive adjustment of thirty-two thousand for a donation from M Power for interpretive signs and kiosks in cities, in city parks is also part of the proposal. And then this next slide includes a quick glance at our general fund revenue categories. I did want to make note of a few items on this slide. Um, you can see here that we're adjusting down sales tax, uh, which is line two, uh, as we discussed. We also have a positive adjustment to TOT over six hundred thousand and that's uh line three on this slide. Um, the all-other revenue line near the bottom includes transfers in adjustments. Uh, we are proposing a transfer in of two million that we'll discuss shortly, but I did want to make note of it on this slide for your reference. In total, Q three adjustments uh propose a positive increase of two point eight million in general fund revenues. And this next slide covers a few general uh fund expenditure points. A total net decrease of a little over sixty thousand is being proposed, which includes a combination of increases and decreases for various items such as personnel adjustments, operational supplies, staff development and training, and other various expenses. We are proposing an increase of six hundred thousand and seven hundred thousand in overtime salaries for police and fire. However, these amounts are offset by corresponding equivalent decreases in full-time sa, salaries. And the adjustments are due to vacancies from open positions and staff injuries in those departments. Um, these adjustments have a net zero impact on the general fund, but help us better align the budget with actuals. And again, attachment A uh included in your packet includes a full list of the adjustments with uh descriptions. And this uh next slide provides a quick glance at our expenditure categories. Uh, you can see slight adjustments in most categories. The reduction of about a hundred and twenty thousand in personnel costs is mainly due to vacancies and savings related to the continued closure of Canyon Park. The total overall general fund reduction is approximately sixty thousand in expenditures. And as we close out the year, we'll continue to closely track our expenditures and be diligent in our spending. And as part of these quarterly updates, we want to let you know where we're at. Um, given the proposed adjustments for uh twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, we expect to close the year with a surplus of about eight hundred and seventy thousand in the general fund. And as part of these updates, we take the information and it helps guide us to make decisions, but we really try to hold the line and come in uh under budget. And as council will recall, the last few years, we have come in significantly under budget in the general fund, so we're aiming to do that again this year. Um, but let's take a look at how we calculated the deficit. So uh, the first line here is our revenues, which includes original budget, quarter two and quarter three adjustments, and that's uh fifty-seven point six eight million. And then our expenditures, which includes quarter two and quarter three adjustments, is fifty-six point eight one million uh for estimated surplus of eight hundred and seventy thousand or point eighty-seven million. And adjustments to non-general fund accounts are also being proposed as part of this quarterly update. Um, several adjustments greater than fifty thousand are included on this slide. The first reduction of seventy thousand in uh traffic safety, sweeping, parking fine revenue uh is being proposed and it's due to a reduction in parking violations during the year. Um, the second adjustment is a proposed increase of a little over a hundred and thirty-one thousand in section fifty-three-ten enhanced mobility grant revenues. Um, this increase in grant funds will be used towards the Dial-A-Ride pro, program. Uh, we are also proposing two expenditure adjustments greater than fifty thousand. Uh, we're proposing a decrease, uh, I'm sorry, an increase of a little over a hundred and thirty-one thousand to adjust the budget for the Dial-A-Ride program based on updated costs during the year. Uh, and this increase in expenditures is offset by an increase in revenue that uh we just discussed a moment ago. And then in the water fund, we are proposing an increase of two hundred and eighty-six thousand in electricity costs based on updated estimates.
I was going to say before you flip the page on the um uh parking uh fines, I, I'm helping to increase those. For those that don't think that the mayor gets parking tickets, I've gotten two in the last uh month, so there you go.
Well, thank you for your contributions.
Thank you for your contribution, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Add a little extra apparently to these.
Um, so as I mentioned previously, we are proposing several transfers in and out among city funds as part of this proposal. So as background, as council will recall, in prior years, the general fund transferred two million dollars to the capital projects fund to help uh support the city's well-filled electrical project. Um, this was a critical project as the well field serves as the city's primary water production and treatment facility. At the time the project began, the water fund didn't have enough resources to finance the project, which is approximately three point seven million. However, the water fund is now in a financial position to repay the general fund. So as part of this quarterly update, staff is proposing a two million dollar transfer out from the water fund back to the capital projects fund, followed by a two million dollar transfer out from the capital projects fund back to the general fund. Um, these transfers will ensure that the general fund is fully reimbursed for the initial two million dollar transfer. And uh this repayment aligns with principle one of our financial resiliency plan, which aims to protect general fund resources and minimizes subsidies to other funds that should be self-sustaining.
If I could just add, um, in speaking with Alex uh last week, this project should be complete by the end of June two thousand twenty-five. Um, we expect it to come in, we're, you know, fingers crossed, approximately three hundred thousand dollars under a budget, which those, those costs we don't spend will all be benefit, will benefit the, the, the water fund. Um, and it's important to note that this project also included a very expensive backup generator. So the, in the event of a power outage, we're able to turn on power and still power the city's water supply.
Great.
Just a question on that, the funds transfer, is that already included in these adj, so the two million that's going back to the general fund, is that included in those, the previous?
Uh, yes, it is. It's included in the numbers that we looked at.
Okay.
Yes. You're welcome. Okay, so next we wanted to provide city council with a quick high-level update on our CIP projects. Um, we discussed our CIP program at our earlier study session, so we'll just do a really high-level review. Um, the CIP program has been classified into eight categories as noted on this slide. And a detailed listing of the CIP projects that are budgeted for twenty-four, twenty-five is attached as exhibit one to the report. And it includes information for each project. A column is included which shows the amount budgeted for twenty-four, twenty-five, which is the column circled in red on this uh slide here. And as council's aware, the CIP plan is a budgeting and planning tool. Uh, currently thirty-six projects are budgeted for twenty-four, twenty-five. And as part of the quarterly budget update, staff reviewed all CIP projects. Um, we looked at project timelines and updated costs. And based on this review, staff is proposing a decrease of one point six million in CIP revenues, a decrease of seven point five million in CIP expenditures. But most adjustments reduce unused budget from twenty-four, twenty-five for project work that has shifted to twenty-five, twenty-six. And these amounts will be rolled over into the two-year budget. Um, proposed CIP adjustments for twenty-four, twenty-five are included on attachment B. Um, and this slide includes recently completed projects and a few photos from some of those projects. Uh, we looked at most of these at our Q two budget update in March, uh, but we like to celebrate our completed projects, so we included them again. And we have one new uh project to add to the list, which is the Canyon Park and Nature Center facilities and furniture upgrades. Um, and this project was recently completed. The project provided furniture and important upgrades to the Canyon Park Nature Center. Um, these upgrades will help to ensure that the nature center will continue to support our community with outdoor educational prog, uh, programs once the park is open. And then this slide includes uh CIP projects that staff will be continuing to work on and are expecting to complete by the end of the fiscal year. Again, we looked, looked at this list in March, but we have a new addition to the list at the bottom, which is the SCADA system reconstruction project. We're currently doing repairs to Ridgeway that are expected to be completed in June, so this is good news. And then in addition to the projects expected to be completed by the end of the fiscal year, there are many other projects in progress at various stages, including uh community center renovations, the design portion, a Mountain Avenue traffic signal and safety improvements project, Peck Road Street improvements, Satoru Sunishi Park, library enhancements project, and then Huntington Drive Phase Two. And I did want to note that most of these projects are funded with Measure K funding, except for the Huntington Drive Phase Two project. Um, again, this is the final budget update for twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, as council's aware, we're currently working on the development of the two-year budget. And earlier, we had our first study session to review CIP, the CIP program and our fees and charges. Again, on June third, we're planning to review the operating budget with formal budget approval uh scheduled for June seventeenth. And this concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions, Buffy? If we have no questions, then uh the recommendation is to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-three.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash twenty-three to approve the proposed budget adjustments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmembers Beldon.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Dr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Mayor Chevlin.
Yes. Thank you very much. Uh, then without uh adjourning our city council meeting, we are going to convene the Monrovia Housing Authority meeting and uh I'm, do I have to tell you what time we're convening it? Okay, great. Can we have a roll call?
Yes. Board members Beldon.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Chairman Chevlin.
Yes, here. Uh, moving on then to uh the consent calendar, which are items MHA CC one and CC two. Uh, those are considered ordinary in, in nature and can be passed with one motion. Do we have any, anything anyone wants to pull? Without that, do we have a motion to approve our MHA consent calendar?
So move.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, let's do a roll call.
Board members Beldon.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kelly.
Yes.
And Chairman Chevlin.
Yes. Uh, then moving on to public uh input and then, oh, that is for our regular meeting, correct? Yes. Okay, so then we are um adjourning our Monrovia Housing Authority meeting, uh, and then we are going back then to our regular um agenda. We do not have any need for uh further public input. Um, and our next scheduled meetings, regular meetings uh is scheduled for Tuesday, June third, twenty-twenty-five, at seven-thirty PM, right here in these council chambers. And before we adjourn, I also wanted to, I, I missed highlighting, since this weekend is um Memorial Day, there are two uh great events. Catherine Barker, supervisor of District Five, that's an ongoing, I don't know how many annual events it's been now, but there's a tribute to veterans and military families. That's on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, at Arcadia County Park, uh, from ten AM to one PM. There's a formal um, um, program at about, I'm going to say, I, it's normally, I believe, at eleven AM. And then on Monday, Memorial Day is the Allied Veterans Memorial Day event at Livock Memorial Park at ten AM, and that's always a very nice.
Oak Memorial Park at 10 AM, and that's always a very nice, um, um, event as well. So, we remember our military veterans, those that gave the ultimate sacrifice. And again, we thank our, our library staff, they're, and all that they do to support our, our veterans. But this evening, in adjournment, uh, it is in memory of Phyllis Harrison, grandmother of our city manager Dylan Feek, and our hearts and prayers and support go out to, um, the Feek family. And with that, then, at 8:59, we are adjourned. Thank you for joining us.